At this time, I will call our regular meeting to order and we'll ask the clerk to establish a quorum of the board.
Mr. Whitehead?
Present.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield? Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Stoltz?
Present.
All board members are present tonight, thank you for that. We do have the agenda that has been published last week. There's copies of it out there on the foyer. Our people at home can find this on our website. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Motion to accept the agenda.
A motion by Commissioner Hart to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been set. Okay, the approval of the minutes from our regular scheduled meeting held here back on February the 9th, 2023. This is also in the packet. The clerk has prepared the minutes. Is there any corrections, modifications, or concerns of the board with the minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as prepared?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as prepared. Okay, we do have a couple of public hearings tonight. The first one we have is Mac Pettigrew requests a rezone from C-1 Commercial to R-2 Residential for property located at the corner of East Reed Road and North Highway 27, Lafayette, Georgia, 30728, tax map and parcel number 0-321-2-027. Is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak in opposition of this proposed rezone? Any opposition? Okay. Hearing none, is there anyone here that wants to come forward and speak in favor of this rezone? You don't have to, but if anyone wants to, you're welcome to speak. Yes, sir, please come to the front if you would. We ask that you state your name and speak where they can hear you, please.
I'm Mac Pettigrew. I'm the owner of the property. In order for me to sell it, I need to get it rezoned. And Blake Hamilton here is the prospective buyer.
Yes, sir, my name is Blake Hamilton, and my plan with it is do a three-unit townhouse. And here's the blueprint. I don't know if y'all care to see this. And it'll face East Reed Road, and I'm going to stay off 27 as far as possible. I know the setback's 25 feet from the Highway 27, and then 65 off of the middle of East Reed Road. And then with the dimensions of that three-unit townhouse, I should have no problems in the setbacks.
Any questions from the board?
No, sir. That looks good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all pretty much. Okay, anyone else that wants to speak either for or against this request by Mr. Pettigrew for the rezone on East Reed Road? Anyone else has any additional comments on this? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to our next item. We do have a request for a lot size variance for property located at 1003 Magnolia Street, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map and parcel 0-206-090A. Anyone that wants to speak in opposition of this? Any opposition for the variance of property located in Rossville at Magnolia? Okay, hearing none, anyone wants to speak in favor of this? Yes, please come forward. If you would, state your name, please.
I'm Marilyn Saunders, and this is-
I'm Randy Saunders.
Can maybe approach?
Yes, absolutely.
Please.
We've got five of them, there's two sheets here.
Thank you.
First off, I'd like to say thank you so much for consideration of this appeal. First off, I'd also like to say I'm not asking for anything that's out of the ordinary for the neighborhood. I need the variance to keep the lot from becoming what I call a bum lot, which is I can't sell it, I can't build on it, but I still have to pay taxes. And also in reference to that, yes, I'm a Tennessee resident, but I have owned five different properties in Walker County. Well, actually, this would be my say. Now, I own 1,000, we own 1,001 Magnolia Street also currently, and then we've had previous ones. And so that's what I'm concerned about. I also want to say that when I got out of college, I worked in Lafayette, Georgia, as a speech therapist for a while. But also, I want to add that if I decide to put a manufactured home on it, it would be relatively new, and it would run vertical to Magnolia so that it would not be totally-
You would be able to make all the setback requirements.
Yes, yes. And now, I noticed I've read your agenda, and so my lot lines were a little different because I got mine off of the assessor's thing, and so they're a little different. But yes, and I'm also aware of the restrictions for single wides. But I've also been researching since a lot, you know, was denied last week about that I found some new construction floor plans that will fit the setback requirements, which would pretty much be, it would have to be 25 feet or less. But I think y'all have me down at 64 and a half, so it may have to be 24. But nevertheless, I've been looking at like little cottage styles. The only thing is like in this short amount of time, I wasn't able to meet with a contractor to kind of see the numbers. We're a small business, and so I'm a little concerned about a new build in light of the current economic situation and the current labor, because I can't give somebody work the next week, you know? A lot of times when you're in construction, they want you to get on their calendar, they want to be able to service them longer than just one job. But I'll just have to see what the numbers would be, and that's why I just thought if I could do manufactured home on a permanent foundation, that would take less amount of time and go ahead and get another property. Also, I'd like to say that if you look, I have all the property addresses and also the map, and my map is off of the GSI. But if you'll notice that 15 out of the 23 lots with houses on nearby streets are less than 15,000 square feet, four of the 23 lots are smaller than the subject property, and then there are three mobile or manufactured homes in the area, and I have those marked. We also want this property for a long term, and I guess maybe I'm a little concerned that if I have to do a new build, it would be, end up being a spec house, and I kind of don't really want to do that, because I'm not so sure that the, I'd have to just do the numbers, the math, to see whether or not rent could be supported for a new build. Again, thank you, guys.
Any questions for the board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that will conduct our public hearings. On those items, we do allow anyone in the public that would like to come make a public comment. We do ask you to keep your time limit to five minutes, if anyone that would like to come forward tonight and present. Yes, sir, Mr. Culpepper?
Sean Culpepper, Chairman of the Walker County Historical Preservation Commission. We had our first meeting in August 2021 at Lee Gordon Mill, and we have generated an overview of our meetings and what our goals and objectives for in the upcoming years, and just to have open line of communication with the Board of Commissioners. I don't, we're not going to go through the entire docket tonight, but I'm going to ask our secretary, Renee Griffin, to rig this. Like all good secretaries, she drafted this and wrote it, so Renee, you should know it by heart.
Hello, my name is Renee Griffin. I am the Secretary for the Walker County Historical Preservation Commission. The Walker County Historical Preservation Commission wishes to present a year-end report of the completed work, ongoing projects, and future goals of the Commission for the review of the Walker County Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Walker County. Completed projects and participations include development of interpretive signs and waysides at four locations throughout the county, the Battle of Shipscap in Villanow, District Hill African American Cemetery in Chickamauga, the William Little House in Armarchi Valley, and Neighbors Chapel, AME, that's American Methodist Episcopal, if anybody's unfamiliar, Church in Harrisburg. Funding for all four projects was provided by the Georgia Civil War Commission. Student-led design of commission letterhead with a certificate of recognition and award during the Lafayette High School Honors Night. Commissioners attended Beverly's Historical Moments hosted by Beverly Foster of the Walker County African American Historical and Alumni Association, the premier exhibit, Buildings We Built for the Walker County African American History and Cultural Center, and Walker County's first Women's Veteran Appreciation held at American Legion Lodge Post 339. Numerous letters of support and information for historic properties seeking information about historic preservation. Active projects include development of interpretive sign for the Durham Mining Community, development of countywide historical guide for elementary students, recording local oral history, and creating engaging content for young citizens. Goals for 2023: complete updated Walker County Resource Survey. The survey will allow Walker County to be a certified local government and become eligible for historic development grants. Courthouse renovation, development of the Oak Grove School in Walker County Educational Wayside. It is the hope of the Commission that through this report, the effort and labor of the Commission can be better understood by the public, and the Commission can become a valuable resource for all citizens of Walker County. The Commission hopes to inspire the love of history, archaeology, geology, anthropology, in addition to other disciplines, to the young citizens of the county, and hopes that love will inspire them toward new and innovative historical expression into the 21st century. Thank you.
Appreciate this information, very good. Very well put together.
The wayside marker for the African American Neighbors Chapel, AME Church and Cemetery, I work with Beverly Foster on that. The sign's up, and we're going to dedicate the sign Saturday at 1 o'clock if any of you can attend, weather permitting, okay? Thank you.
John, just to give y'all an update too on your Oak Grove School, on our survey. I have gotten Compton survey, you know, had a good conversation with Randy, and he's agreed to kind of move us up on the schedule, and we should have that survey either by the end of next week or the first week of March. He'll have the corners marked for ourselves there.
Great.
Move forward on that.
Just bring up everyone up to date, that's a one-room schoolhouse located outside of Chickamauga, in good shape. It does belong to Walker County. And the earliest photo we've seen of that was the children at that school in 1910, so it's an intact, one-room schoolhouse, a real historic treasure, and we want to develop it into an educational park and wayside. Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper, quick question for you. Kind of tell us where we're at as far as the interpretive sign at the Durham Mine.
Well, we're basically, we've completed the text, and we've completed the graphics, in other words, the historic period photos that go on the sign, and we're just, we have requested funding for the sign through the Commission Chairman's office, so we're just waiting for a PO or whatever your purchase procedure is and get the thing. We'd like to get it off the ground and get it complete, maybe this spring have a dedication, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, and I sent Mr. Culpepper a letter back and asked them what other signs they wanted to do, so, and they have sent me a list by email yesterday.
I think I sent it about 10:30 last night, so yeah.
So I got that yesterday, so we're hoping maybe if we have a group of signs, maybe they'll give us a little better price.
And let me say this too, I know I've got a few minutes, but I've probably over the, through the Civil War Commission, City of Chickamauga and other, they charge, and we haven't had to do this, they charge $300 for formatting the sign. I had a gentleman that did that, but he's in ill health. And I'm sure, you can download the program for their site, and I'm sure you've got someone here with the computer skills that can format that site, that program, so that'd be one way. And you can get a better price, more scientific.
So I think on your list, I glanced at it, I didn't have time to read it all, but y'all had like maybe another seven or so?
It's, I think it's five.
Five, okay.
I'll go over them just a minute if you want to.
Yeah, if you can list them off, you've got them memorized.
You've got, you have that Rock Mineral Springs Resort, which is off of 136, going through the gap, they call it gap in the war, right across from Drifted Springs. That was a, I'll say turn of the century, but I guess it was last century, 19. It was quite a, they had a hotel, they had bowling alleys, they had badminton courts. It was quite a complex, and of course, at that time, people really believed in soaking in these mineral springs. So that's just a treasure that most folks don't know about, okay? Number two, we want to do an interpretive sign with three parts, the history of the dawery plantation at Mountain Cove Farm, okay? And the Civil War activities in the Cove prior to the Battle of Chickamauga. There's over 15,000 Union troops in the Cove marching towards Crawfish Springs or Chickamauga to engage the Confederates. Then you've got our Native American history, and there is a write-up that came out of the Walker County Master, Chief John Mclemore, who the county's name, the Cove was named after. So that's one. Help me out here now. The Estel Mining Community, Estel Cemetery, Iron Old Mine, big operation, big operation. And of course, the Oak Grove, the interpretive sign, and so on and so forth.
You're getting close to the subway.
Well, I can't count, that's how come my letter, I can't believe, that's how come my letter.
Thank you all for being here, y'all made a great work.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment on that. Since we've got spring coming up and tourist season coming up, I would really like to see us get together with regard to these signs, possibly have those signs up spring, summertime, that way when tourists come through Walker County, then they can read the history about it. I think it would be important to put that on our website, great information. I think it would certainly bring some folks to our county.
Yeah, that was another thing that I put in my letter, request, was for them to get good high-quality photos of all the signs that are out there now, so we can put those on our Walker Rocks website.
If I'm personally going to do that, I know them by heart, where they are, and I've got it all on my computer, there's many, many interpretive signs in Walker County.
So we're going to get those on the website, so, and that way people can see them if they can't come and come to town, but also people that want to come explore those, we're going to try to do a kind of a route or a trail pathway on the website where people would know which one to go to next.
Great.
Kind of map that out.
Just one more comment as far as the signs. We're ready to go on Durham Mining.
Yes, sir.
But it may take, it'd take a while to get all the information to get, but we'd like to move on the Durham Mine, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Plug the reenactment.
Huh?
Plug the reenactment.
Well, of course, we've got the 160th anniversary of the Battle of Chickamauga reenactment, which is, I think it's going to have an economic impact on Walker County, especially Lafayette, and I appreciate the support for that, and we want to work with Rocker Walks. We'll have a booth down there with literature we can hand out to the folks, have some of the information where interpretive signs are and history and so on and so forth.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I enjoyed y'all's meeting the other night. I actually learned quite a few things, so it was wonderful, thank you.
Very good. Who would like to be next? Sir, yes, come on up, please. Please state your name if you would.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name is Thomas Bucy. I'm the Vice President of Path Company. I'm here at the invitation of Commissioner Askew. We met through mutual friends, and he kind of learned what we do, and he thought I should come up here and kind of introduce myself. So we are a energy services company. What we do is we help counties and cities, specifically with my company, rural counties and cities, handle deferred maintenance issues, reset their energy use, and under Georgia law, we can use the energy savings from the work that we do to help pay for the work that we accomplish. We're soup to nuts, we're a five-year-old company, we're privately owned by two individuals in Tennessee and Mississippi, and we're just here to help. I love historical preservation and I love history, and I know that that's just really deep in this part of the state. I'm from northeast Georgia myself. An example of the work that we do, we took the Tate County Courthouse in Mississippi, which is the longest continually-used courthouse in the state, it's used to this day. We went in and did a complete energy overhaul of it, and we were able to use some of the savings to pay for some of the restoration of that courthouse, and it's still used to this day. So that's just a brief example, it's topical of the things that we do, and we can do that for any county-owned building. So I look forward to hopefully having a continued conversation with you guys and letting you know more about us, and hopefully we can learn more about Walker County's needs.
Thomas, what would you, how would the next step be as far as if we wanted to look at some assessments of, if, maybe not say every, I don't know how many buildings we have, Chairman, but there's quite a few, but if we wanted to move forward with an assessment on something, for instance, we're looking at, you mentioned courthouse, we're in the process as we speak of taking and looking at refurbishing the exterior to get things back. But, so what would the process be, or what kind of fees would be incurred in assessment, or how does that, how does that work?
The next step for working with us is pretty easy, and it costs you no money. All we would ask is a list of all of your buildings that the county owns and their square footage, which you can easily pull from your insurance assessment for the county. We would need an accounting summary of your utility use as it is today. We would take that back, benchmark it against our database, and we could come back and present to the Commission and say, hey, if this is what you guys have, this is what we think you have, this is the savings that we think that you may have, and that's just the next step in the process, but I'm happy to-
And that's at no cost to us.
That is no cost at all. Just gives us an opportunity to peek under your energy hood and then share that information with you all, so you can see what you're spending generally. The next step after that would be an investment-grade audit, which doesn't, it doesn't cost money, that's rolled into the project, but that takes about six months, and that's if you guys decide to move forward with an RFQ to do an IGA. That would allow us to come in and look at every light fixture, every HVAC unit, every window that the county owns, and come back with a laundry list of things that you could do. The cool thing about that is, is that we do not have to do it all. If you guys decided, well, we just want to take this small bite of the elephant, we're happy to take that small bite of the elephant with you. But it's just a pleasure to be here. My son and I love to camp in Cloudland and come up here quite a bit.
What was the name of that company again, Simon?
Path Company, and my name's Thomas Bucy. I can, I'll leave you guys some cards.
Yeah, because we, I'd like for the board to talk about leasing, especially with the free assessment, I'd like, what kind of timeframe would it be for you to come up and look at some of our-
What we would do is, once you guys gave us the information, we'd take a peek at it, and I'd probably send an engineer mine up here just to get a better physical look generally of what you guys have going on. The turnaround on that, it just depends on how long that takes for you guys to-
Shoot me a list of that information.
I will.
Did you call, if you'll shoot that to me, I'll get that for you.
Yes, sir.
We'll see if we, get the free, free look, so you can't hurt us, so.
That's, that's it.
I think that would be very wise for some looking at energy audit there, so appreciate you coming up.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Anytime I get to come up here is, I live in Marietta, and I'm from Madison County. Anytime I can come up to a place like this, I'm happy to do it.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, sir. Anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Kerry McCormick. Just wanted to introduce myself and our company, which I think most of y'all are familiar with up here, Array Communications, and our concept for Walker County. I know we've had a couple conversations on it. You know, we have a high-speed hybrid fiber-fixed wireless solution. You know, we're looking to offer high-speed internet, phone, and TV services for Walker County. You know, we're hoping that this project, and we can work with you guys on this and the details, and get it over the finish line, but you know, we're hoping to help provide jobs, we're looking at putting a self-imposed tax on ourselves to help out Walker County, you know, make sure that we're going to get internet at least to the unserved and underserved at a minimum, and all of this is going to be done with federal grant money, nothing at the cost to the county. You know, and more or less, you know, we just want to make sure that this project has legs and it looks like it's, you know, going to work out for the county as well as us, and I just want to, you know, make myself available. If there's anything I can do, provide any information, make sure that we dot all the i's and check all, cross all the t's, so just wanted to choose myself, and thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Karen Hughes, I'm the principal at Ridgeland High School, and I had the pleasure of doing a test site for Array Communications at Ridgeland. As you know, or you may not know, Ridgeland is a one-to-one Chromebook, so every student has a Chromebook, they do their work through Google Classroom, and it would be, our students during the trial run had no trouble. They were changing classes every 90 minutes, they weren't having any trouble, things weren't getting dropped, we had really good experience with them. Also, you know, I'm thinking when you're talking about internet and accessibility, it's truly a game-changer for educating. In Walker County, as you know, we have just over 8,400 students, K-12, and as a county, our free and reduced lunch rate is hitting right at 70. I know at Ridgeland, I'm at 69%. So if you take that percentage and you go by the 8,403 that we have enrolled as of today, you're looking at just under 5,800 students, families, community members that could benefit from having the wireless. So I'm just, I was very impressed with them, and it would really be a game-changer, because if we had bad weather and we had to be out, we could keep having class, because we know for sure parents are not having to run to the library or sit in McDonald's parking lot trying to get internet. So I just wanted to come and share that, it's very important to me.
Thank you.
Y'all have any questions, Renee?
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward with our agenda. Okay, under our new business, we have a Resolution R-011-23, Resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to authorize the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission filing of a grant application for Historic Resource Survey. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas the Board reestablished the Walker County Historic Preservation Commission, the Commission on March the 11th, 2021, for the purpose of preserving historic resources in our community. And whereas, one of the functions of the Commission is to maintain an inventory of all the property within the county designated as historic or having the potential for designation as historic. And whereas, in order to qualify for the state grant relating to historic preservation, a new Historic Resource Survey must be completed. Whereas, the Commission requests authorities to proceed a grant to conduct a Historic Resource Survey and agree to complete the application and interview Historic Survey consultants capable of completing the task. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby authorize Walker County Historic Preservation Commission to file a grant application with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Historic Preservation Division to fund a new Historic Resources Survey. Be it further resolved and agreed to provide the 40% match required for the grant through in-kind services, so resolved and adopted the 23rd day of February 2023. So as you heard from our Preservation Commission earlier, this is just to help them continue their work and to help put us in positions with their collaboration and their work to hopefully have even more grant opportunities, and so this is kind of to kick it off. So any questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to approve Resolution R-11-23. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay, the next one we have is Resolution R-12-23, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to oppose any state proposal to increase truck weight limits. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, the Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas, the Board is responsible for building and repairing public roads and bridges. And whereas, there are 674 miles of roads in the unincorporated Walker County with over 3,000 drainage culverts that run underneath county roads. And whereas, there exists a proposal in the state legislature, House Bill 189, and Senate Bill 165, to increase- there exists a proposal in the state legislature, House Bill 189, and Senate Bill 165, to increase the weight limits of trucks allowed on roads in Georgia from 80,000 pounds to 90,000 pounds. Whereas House Bill 189 and Senate Bill 165 will double the number of load-restricted posted bridges in Georgia, negatively impacting 1,408 bridges. And whereas 90,000 pounds is nearly double the weight most county roads can accommodate, and whereas effectively shortening the lifespan of county roads and bridges vastly increasing maintenance costs on our citizens with no benefits to their quality of life. And whereas the county and the city governments own and maintain 80% of the roads in Georgia. Whereas the federal government prohibits trucks over 80,000 pounds from traveling on the interstate system. And whereas the state that allows trucks over 80,000 pounds, the U.S. Department of Transportation has concluded these vehicles have a higher and more severe crash rates, heavier trucks are more difficult to control, and safety systems such as brakes, steering, and tires wear out faster. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia do hereby oppose any effort in the state level to increase truck weight limits as such and move would place the unnecessary financial burden on our citizens while, while also putting them at greater risk of bodily harm while driving to and from school, work, and other daily functions. Be it further resolved to call on Senator Colton Moore, Representative Mike Cameron, Representative Steve Tarvin, to oppose any related legislation that comes before them in the Georgia General Assembly. So resolved and adopted the 23rd day of December, 2023. A little more information on this, the Association of County Commissioners has been in opposition to this statewide. And a couple of things I wanted to read here to you. It states that according to the Georgia Department of Public Safety in 2022, inspection data, 66% of the inspected vehicles transporting unmanufactured forestry products were placed out of service. An out-of-service designation means the vehicle is unsafe to operate on the roadways. Well-maintained brakes and tires are critical to stopping a truck in the shortest distance. In 2022, the Department of Public Safety data shows that brakes, tire, and suspension violations combined account for over 50% of all violations cited toward log trucks. And they break those out. 23.2% of the vehicles that were put out of service was violations with their brakes. 18.7% of out-of-service vehicle violations were the load securement, being securing of the load properly. 16.3% of the out-of-service vehicle violations were due to the tires. 13.1% of the out-of-service vehicle violations were for the suspension not being proper. Also, heavy trucks would have an operation on the state and local roads as opposed to running on the interstates. So if the state legislature raises from 80,000 to 90,000, or anything over 80,000, those trucks will have to travel on local roads, because the federal interstate system says you've got to stay under 80,000 pounds. So what's going to happen is the trucks that, if they were permitted or get approved to run at 90,000 pounds, they're going to be coming down Highway 27 through our cities. They're going to be coming across Taylor's Ridge on Highway 136 to get over into Alabama and cross over Lookout Mountain. This results in added, more dangerous trucks on our roads rather than fewer trucks. Greater risk of rollovers, heavier trucks tend to have a higher center of gravity, because the additional weight is often stacked vertically. Raising the center of gravity increases the risk of rollovers. Increased wear and tear, increasing the weight of trucks causes additional wear and tear on key safety components. The 2016 U.S. Department of Transportation study found that trucks over 80,000 pounds had a higher overall out-of-service violation rate, 18% higher with brake violations, compared to those acting below 80,000 pounds. This is especially important, because the 2016 study by the Insurance Institute of Highway Safety found that trucks with out-of-service violations are 362% more likely to be involved in a crash. Heavy log trucks increase danger. Severe crashes, log trucks are more likely to be involved in crashes resulting in fatalities and injuries. In 2021, vehicles in log truck crashes were 68% more likely to be involved in a fatality and 26% more likely to be involved in injuries. The bottom line is to this, Georgia taxpayers will have to pay the additional infrastructure, infrastructure damage on our roads, because these trucks will not be allowed on the interstate systems. They're going to be on our local, county, city, and state roads. And again, remembering the resolution, it states that 80% of the roads are owned by local governments in the state of Georgia. We do have a map that's in the packet that shows in yellow currently posted bridges, and then in red, if House Bill 189 is passed, the additional bridges across the state that would have to be posted due to weight restrictions if you go to 90,000 pounds. So this is a big issue in our county and our cities. And when we have major state highways running through our cities, and we have state highways running across our ridges and our mountains, you're going to see more truck traffic. Also, this will shift weight off of the rail system, because when they raise the weight limits on trucks, you'll see less products and goods and services being on rail, because they can move it faster through the truck system. So you will see an increase in truck traffic, because less companies will use rail, because it's more advantageous to use trucks. Also, the state of Georgia has done a great thing by putting an inland port in Murray County, where they are taking containers off of barges in Savannah, Georgia, and by rail, transporting those to Murray County. You look geographically, how do you get from Murray County to Alabama? You're going to come through Walker County on Highway 136. And so you're going to have all this container traffic that's going to end up in Murray County. They're going to take state highways over to Whitfield County. They're going to come through Whitfield County on 136 to Walker County, come over Taylor's Ridge, come down the center of the city of Lefet, make the hard right turn right on, right on Town Square, go up to the Walmart and turn left, and head over Lookout Mountain to get over toward Alabama. So this could be quite devastating for our local community. And tonight, I ask the board for their approval of this resolution. Is there any questions or comments of the board?
I have a few comments. So I drive a truck for 11 every day, run roughly 500 miles a day. More truck weight, and I'm opposed to this, you'll see as I go on. More truck weight equals less trips on the road. I mean, if, if you need an X number ton of gravel, and you can haul that in less trips, is less trips on the road. Gross weight is not really what's going to tear the road up. What, if you do research and study it, it's how much weight is per axle. Our Senator Colton Moore has proposed that they bring back or honor the triaxle in the state of Georgia, which would put, distribute the weight on the axles of the trucks. So it's not going to be as hard on the road. I've heard a lot of people, and I heard you mention that it's going to put more of a burden on taxpayers. A trucking company, I think our company spends about $22,000 a week in diesel fuel. That's a lot of fuel taxes. Plus, they get hit with a road use mileage tax on top of the fuel tax. So they're paying their fair share in road and infrastructure tax, too.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple myself. I, I, I see ACCG's put together a good, a, a good argument point here. And I hear a lot of statistics, and I was listening to everything that you said, and all the statistics are based on log trucks. I, I, I'm, of course, anybody that's familiar with, with trucking, you know, you know that the log trucks, you know, usually are probably not the, the newer model stuff that's running up and down the roads. But I think a, a big part of the problem is, is enforcement. And, you know, like you said, if we've got bridges and box culverts, and Carlin can attest to that, if they're, if they're not rated, then they, then, you know, they can't go across them anyway. If they do, they're breaking the law and would be dealt with in that, in, in that shape, form, or fashion. I, when we talk about the reason that there's, and I'd like for you to, if, if you, if you want to elaborate, or I will, on, a little bit on how that it came about, where, what initiated the raising of the, the, the weight limits to start with. You know, was, was, I think, during the pandemic, and it had a lot to do with the supply chain shortages and those types of things, getting, getting products to people.
And there's still driver shortage.
Still driver shortage. But I, I, I see, you know, any, any wear and tear, I mean, any, any type of wear and tear is going to degrade the roads. It only lasts for so long. That's just a fact. Not speculation. But I, I am concerned that the, it concerns me that the, the state, it's already, there's already, like you said, two bills, I think, in place, Senate bill and a House bill. And I think the governor is supporting this increase as well. And I think a lot of that has to do with, just as you mentioned, that port that's been brought up, you know, it's, it has to do with commerce and moving, moving products and, and keeping supply and making money. It's, I guess, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is the free, you know, free market. In other words, you know, you, you should be able to, be able to, to, to run your business. I, I've just got, like I said, I, I think it's a, a lot of the information is, is directed to try to instill like a fear, it almost seems to me like. And I do know that in a lot of other states, and I don't have, I didn't take the time to gather the information, I'd be glad to, but there are states that have much higher load restrictions now, you know, in, in the, in the United States. And so we're speculating that all of these trucks are going to run state routes, and that they're all going to be overloaded. That's a speculation. They can't cut, you know, like you said, now, they're not going to be on the interstate, so we're not going to get, that's where the trucks are coming from now, are coming off the interstate. I follow them every day. Commissioner Hartz, wherever he sees them, go through his community. We all see them, we go through our, our communities here. So anyway, I, I just, I just feel like it's a, it's a, it's 50/50. There's, there's some give and get on it, and I just want to be careful that we don't put ourselves in a position, just as we've talked about grants and things that we're looking to try to help, we, we like to stay in, in, in good graces with our governing authority, not, and, and more so than, than our, you know, basically ACCG, you know, is a, what do you call it, an association?
Association.
Association. So it's no, nothing to do with governing authority, just association of governments. But no, I, I just wanted to, to add that in. I, I, I'm just, I'm a little, I'm a little skeptical when I, when all I hear is about log trucks and, and how much more damage, because my theory, my theory is, is if I'm carrying more weight, and I, and I farm, and I carry, I pull a lot of stuff around on the roads myself. And my theory is, the more weight that you're pulling, or that you're got on, the more responsible you're going to be as far as, you're, you got to have better tires, because they won't hold it. You've got to have brakes, so they won't stop it. So I, I, I'm kind of torn on that. I'm just seeing the both, seeing two sides, that, you know, one argument from one side, one from the other, and I'm, I'm just, I'm a little, little torn on that. But I just wanted to make those comments, and just like I said, just think it's something we need to really consider.
Well, I mean, a log truck's going to be heavy anyways. They stack all they can get on there, and they don't have scales when they're coming out of the woods. So this is just.
That's right. That's what I'm saying. Log trucks are notorious for that. There's no, yeah, they're.
That becomes an enforcement issue.
Well, that is an enforcement issue. And that's why log, that's why logging contractors have to put up an surety bond.
Exactly.
To, to pay for the, the roads when they, when they mess them up. And that's what we do here in the county now. And so, you know, I just kind of, you know, we're making them put up a bond on the log trucks, and that's what I'm, I'm hearing is going to be a, a big, a major issue. And then, like I said, I think we would be, be more apt to, and I, I see it every day, pulling onto the interstate at, at Resaca, sign after sign after sign, no parking anytime, lined up with trucks in front of them. So it, to me, it's, like you said, it's more of an enforcement issue. And, and I just, I just want to be careful about limiting or hurting commerce and, and economic growth.
Affecting small business.
Right.
You mentioned agriculture. That's one of my concerns.
Well, that's another big one. Grain wagons, people pulling grain. They're not coming, going across scales anywhere. And, and, and energy-heavy loads, you know. So I mean, this, I don't know. I think it's just kind of, seems to me it's kind of tilted, slanted. And it seems like it's slanted in, in the direction of, like I said, to try to instill, oh, gosh, we're going to tear up the roads and kill people. And I don't, I don't believe that's the case at all. Or I don't believe that the House, the Senate, and the government would be, would be supporting it.
One concern I got with it is, is the DOT's not willing to budge on it. So the federal DOT, in other words, on the interstates, you know, if we're going to raise up to 90,000 pounds down 136, or, then, but, but then I-75, you got to be 80,000 pounds.
But they got, so they got to get, that's my point. They can't run on the, on I-75, 59, 20, any, they can't run with 80,000. So to start making it like it's just going to be an influx, that's, that's not true. Those are false. That's kind of a misleading statement, because the majority of the trucks that are out there today run the interstate system, and they're going to continue to.
And, and a lot of them, I mean, really, I mean, I'll be straight and honest with you, it's going to cause a big bump in revenue for the state of Georgia, because what's going to happen is 90% of these drivers are going to jump off right there at Tunnel Hill, run around the scales, get right back on the interstate. They're not going to come to Walker County, trust me. And then they're going to be writing $500,000 tickets all day long for being 10,000 over pound, 10,000 pound overweight on the interstate. So it's really just going to bump Georgia's revenue. That's exactly what's going to happen.
One thing that Commissioner Askew mentioned was about the surety bond that logging companies have to put up. And the state requirement of that is a $5,000 bond. And it is restricted to so many feet from where they enter and exit where they're logging. And so if they're driving two, three miles down a road, and they're causing damage to the road, number one, you can't go that distance inside them. And number two, you've got $5,000 to work with, which is the max that any local government can require for a bond, is $5,000. This reason there's probably a lot of emphasis around logging operations is they are the industry that started this conversation with the General Assembly. At least three years ago, they've been trying to get this through. So this year, they are spending a lot more money, and they're trying to bring in some other industries, and spending a lot of money on lobbying, trying to get this in place. To me, it really comes down to public safety and the impact that it's going to have. And, you know, when there's already reports and data on the national level, in the state level, and y'all know that the heavier vehicle you've got, the harder it is to stop. And so it really comes down as much as a public safety. And y'all see, too, the road conditions that we currently have. And we've paved a lot of roads over the last several years, but we've still got a lot to pave. And I understand if the interstates were going to allow it, it'd probably be a little different story. But they're not, and there's, doesn't seem to be that they ever will. And so, you know, Georgia talks about, they're the number one forestry producer in America. They brag about that, and should. But the forestry industry says they need this to survive, to stay in business. Also, the state of Georgia says, for the last five or six years in a row, we're the number one state to do business in. But yet, they want to say, we got to raise truck weights to survive due to competition. I don't think raising the truck weights are going to affect and lower the state's position to be the number one state to do business in, nor is it going to affect them being the number one in forestry. So there's a lot of risk here. And, you know, the, the logging industry is one of the industries that don't probably get caught as much cheating. But truck weights, and I come from a business background where we operated trucks. we operated trucks, and you know how easy it is to overload a truck. It's very easy to accidentally overload a truck. You don't mean to overload the truck. But a lot of these trucks out here are overweight, just like a lot of people go above the speed limit. So this was an example that one of our local business people brought up this week. If the speed limit's fifty-five, everybody's doing ten or twelve over. If it's sixty-five, you're doing ten or twelve over. Seventy, you're doing ten or twelve over. If they raise these weights to ninety thousand pounds as the new standard, we're going to be even over that. And that's part of the concern, is we're not just stopping at ninety thousand pounds. There will be more. So to give you an example, the industry I come out of is the petroleum business. If you haul a load of diesel fuel, you can only haul seventy-five-hundred gallons on a tractor-trailer. But that tractor-trailer holds ninety-two-hundred gallons on most tractor-trailers. And so you add ten thousand more pounds to that loaded petroleum truck going up and down the road, it's ten thousand more pounds, it's about eight pounds per gallon. You think about the impact of that if that truck is not able to stop.
And, Mr. Chairman, I, and I, I see where you, your position. But here, here again, and I just want to, I want to really look at this thing from Walker County standpoint. Um, so, logging operations in the county, uh, now, there are no scales, so they're not weighing them now, and they're not going to be weighing them until they go up. So we don't, we don't, there's, there's no, unless we plan on putting scale house in.
Well, the Department of Safety does have portable scales.
Well, they do when they pull them over, yeah. When they, when they get pulled over, that's exactly right. That's when, that's when they find the brake violations and the tire violations and all that. I'm very familiar with it. But I think my, what I'm, what I'm getting heartburn over is, like I said, we have logging, logging operations, our agriculture, which is our largest, uh, single producer in the county, um, those, those are already, they're, they're on secondary roads when they come out. They go, then when they come out, they're, they're, they're coming off of secondary roads to start with. We're not, they're not low, they're not checked, they don't know what the weight is on them. You take a, a grain truck loaded full of corn, they should tell them what, just call them what size truck you got. I, I just, I just feel like, I see where, that in the, in the, the, in, the areas, South Georgia, the tree plantations, where you have a lot more of your continual growth, you know, where we're growing trees out in sixteen years now or less, and I, I see that there could be a huge increase. I just don't see, in my, and I'm just trying to understand it, but I just don't see that it's going to impact our, um, side roads and, and our, our back roads, the way that, that it's being made to sound in this report through ACCG. I just, I just believe that if you, if you're doing business, for instance, a fuel truck, you just used a great example, all right? When, when y'all were in business, or when you owned the business, your family, I don't know what percentage, but I know for a fact, just because, just, just demographically, the large percentage of y'all's business was outside of Walker County. I mean, you, just because there's only so many gas stations in Walker County. So, you know, when these, when these people are low, they, they, they already know, they've got to get to us somehow. And here again, they're coming, they're going to be, they come on the interstates. Truck drivers don't want to, they don't want, they don't want to be on these back roads no more than anybody else, to be honest with you. Most of them don't. Now, you know, we have an influx of, of, of people that are driving trucks that aren't probably truck drivers now on the roads. I see those every day as well. But, um, yeah, I just, I just feel like it, to us here, locally, I, I just, I think that it's, I think it's blowing it a, a little bit when we start talking about, you know, safety. Safety's something we all put number one. And that's, that's got to be number one. Well, rather than, rather than to argue or, or to try to work on, on the truck, what, let's, what about, what are we going to do about, like I said, about the enforcement issue? Uh, the, the Motor Vehicle Carrier Division? Wouldn't they, I mean, are they going to, we're going to get more, more here to do that? No. Well, I mean, that's not even mentioned in here, as far as the enforcement side. So I'm just, I'm just trying to flesh it out a little bit, and I'm just not, I'm just not comfortable without some more information. I'd like to see some information on commercial carriers, freight, freight carriers, freight haulers. The, the majority of the trucks on the road are commercial freight haulers. You, you, you know, very few, the log trucks make up a, and I, I don't know what the percentage is, but I can assure you, in the county, in Walker County, log trucks would make up probably less than, uh, uh, five percent or.
I mean, how many bonds right now do we have issued out to logging companies?
You know, Carlin?
We've got, currently, I know that we've got probably four permits out, so at least four.
Four.
Uh, just signed another one last week.
Do we, do we have the ability to, oh, you said the state minimum, I think it's state requirement, the minimum requirement was a five-thousand-dollar surety bond? I, I don't know that. We don't have the authority to increase that amount in our county.
I don't believe we do.
Well, I'd like, well, I'd like to, we'd need to research that and make sure, because I don't want to speculate on it. I want to make sure.
That cap was set by the state.
Yeah, that's a state cap.
Well, that's what, so I, that's.
We can't, I don't think we can update.
Well, that's, I just want to, I just want to see if they're going to, like you said, that may be something that we need to have legislation look at as far as, like we're talking about bringing tag axles back, you know, putting the tag axle on. Well, maybe they need to look at, uh, giving the authority to the, to the districts or the counties to be able to increase that if it's not sufficient amount to cover the damages. So, you know, that, that's another caveat to it. So, like I said, I, I just hear a lot of, it's all log truck, log truck, log truck, and I, and I just don't, I mean, I just don't see that a lot many of them here. But that's, that's just a, we labored that long enough. I just wanted to put an opinion there.
Mr. Chairman, are these bills still in committee?
I know the House bill come back out of committee yesterday. It was passed out of the House, and then it was sent back by the Rules Committee back to the House.
Yeah.
And there was a hearing on it, um, day before yesterday, or either yesterday or day before, and then it was come back out of the House and back through the Rules Committee.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to deny this and leave it to the state later.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Blakemore to deny the adoption of this resolution. Is there a second to support the deny of the resolution?
I'll second. I, I agree with Commissioner Askew. I think we need more information.
I, I just think we, that's, that's what I'm asking for, is that before we, before we pass something, uh, going against our, 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 our government leaders at the state level, that who, who have a lot more information than we do. I just, I just feel like, I'd like to see more information and understand it better.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to deny the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of denying the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that was spoke to deny. Okay. The next item that we have is an agreement between the Department of Natural Resources, Environmental Protection Division on Scrap Tire Amnesty. This is project number twenty-three dash ST dash one forty-six dash zero zero six. I won't take and bore you all the, the legalese, but basically what this is, is going to give us the funding through a grant through the EPD for up to twenty-five thousand fifty-five dollars for scrap tire, uh, abatement project, which we better call as Tire Amnesty Day. And so this, uh, once approved by the board, would be signed and sent back to the EPD. And we have set a preliminary date per board approval, uh, after board approval. Preliminary date has been set for August, excuse me, April the twenty-first, April the twenty-first, twenty-second, excuse me, April twenty-second, which is Earth Day. That's a Saturday in April, is Earth Day. And so this has given us an opportunity to take some of the funds through the state, through this grant, an amount of twenty-five thousand fifty-five dollars. Any questions of the board?
Is there, is there any stipulations on what tires? Can we, all tires, or?
It's, uh, passenger and light truck tires, correct, Payne? Yeah, it does not include.
Agricultural tires or anything like that?
No agriculture, no big truck tires. It's just automotive tires and light truck tires. Great question. Uh, any other questions?
Good question. You said twenty-two, April?
Yeah, April twenty-second. It's a Saturday, and this would be set up at the Walker County landfill on Marble Top Road.
I think it would be probably advantageous to us to help Mr. Gilli. If, uh, we had maybe Joe on our social media site, maybe even Payne get some kind of a comparable so that people don't show up with truckload, with truckload of tires, thinking that they're going to be able to get rid of them. Because when you turn them around at the gate, being an old code guy, I know where they're going to end up. They're going to end up inside the road in a ditch somewhere. They're not going back to the house. You know, that's what people, you know, that's, that's part of, so maybe we could, you know, get some good information out, since it's coming up pretty quick, just to really clarify and help them over there as the tires roll in. They won't be having to turn people around.
Yeah, good point. Very good. Any further discussion with the board? We have a motion to approve accepting the scrap tire amnesty grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand fifty-five dollars.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It is approved. Okay. The next, we have our annual intergovernmental contract agreement for the operations of the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit Drug Task Force. Our commander's here tonight. Did you want to speak to this at all? Please come forward.
I'm Kane Rayly. I'm the commander of the Lookout Mountain Drug Task Force. Uh, we cover Walker County, Dade County, Chautauqua County, and Coteauza Counties. And I just, uh, wanted to thank the commissioners and all the citizens of Walker County for the support they give the Drug Task Force. Um, we have two Walker County agents on the Drug Task Force. They work for the Walker County Sheriff's Office. And, uh, every year, we do this, uh, agreement. Uh, the sheriff, uh, would approve it, and then the, the Board of Commissioners would approve them two agents being on the Drug Task Force. Uh, without that, the Drug Task Force wouldn't exist, because we are federally, uh, granted by the federal government. So much money a year to reimburse the salaries of the agents. Uh, it's a multi-jurisdictional task force, so, like, I work for Chautauqua County. That's who I get paid by. And then we have Walker County, and we have agents from Dade County and, uh, trial police department. We also have an agent with the U.S. Army counter-drug. And we also have two, uh, people that's attached to us from the Department of Community Supervision, which is probation and parole. Uh, and we also have an admin from Dade County. But, uh, again, I'd like to thank commissioners for all the support. Uh, I know a few of them called me before about some things, and, uh, y'all are welcome over there anytime you want to. I know people have questions about the, the Drug Task Force and, uh, how it operates, and y'all are welcome to come over anytime, check it out, um, check out the building. And, um, it was dedicated to Commander, uh, Patrick Doyle, the former commander. Uh, but y'all are more than welcome to come anytime, check it out, look at anything you want to.
Commander Rayly, uh, give us just a real quick overview, if you would, uh, uh, on, on where we are in the area with this, this fentanyl that we keep hearing about and, and all this. What, how bad, uh, how really, how really how bad is it?
It's a lot worse than everybody thinks. Uh, Walker County's had, uh, quite a few overdoses. Uh, I'm sure everybody knows about the three that overdosed in one, one house, uh, in Chickamauga. Uh, Chautauqua County had one two days ago. I got called out on, and that, that subject had fentanyl, uh, in their possession. Uh, they made it to the hospital, but they, they didn't make it. Ended down at the hospital. Um, we got the first pill pressed, uh, in the circuit, and it was in Rossville. So, uh, that's a real big deal. The guy had a kilo of fentanyl. Uh, that's all we weighed. There was a lot more than that. Uh, so, two milligrams is a lethal dose.
And a kilo would be how many, let's say, two point something pounds or something?
Two, kilos, two point two pounds. That's probably enough to kill, uh, everybody in the city of Lefet. So that's how, that's how dangerous it is. Uh, a few years ago, uh, Walker County Sheriff's Office lost a deputy die. He got exposed to fentanyl. Uh, and here recently, we've had another deputy in Walker County get exposed to it and had to get Narcaned, and the doctors said he wouldn't have made it if them officers wouldn't have Narcaned him. So that's how dangerous it is. And them guys was packaging the fentanyl. Uh, you can get through your skin, of course, consume it and get in the corner of your eye or something. So it, it's very dangerous for us, uh, to be around it. And, uh, I've recently learned from the, the federal government that the great people that's making the stuff is putting, uh, cutting it with a, something that Narcan will not bring you back from it. So if you use it, Narcan won't bring you back if it's cut with that, that chemical.
We've, I appreciate the work that you guys do, and I know it's, it's not, like I said a lot of times, it's not a thankful job. A lot of times, people don't like it when they get their door kicked in, but, uh, when they're, when they're out there doing things like this, we've got to, you know, that's, that's just posing a threat. I, I'm actually concerned, and I've made the comment to several people, there's so much of it around, and it's showing up in, like you said, in candy form and all these things. I'm afraid that, that somebody, and, and I, and I'm going to say it now, because I believe it's going to happen one day, somebody's going to go in a convenience store and open a can of Coca-Cola or something. That's just, because it's just so rampant, somebody's going to, a, a dealer could have it on his hands or have it on his clothes, and you may just get a Coca-Cola out of your local convenience store, not even knowing. And that stuff would be just enough to kill you right there.
A lot of times, uh, when we find it on a person, it's rolled up in a dollar bill or some kind of U.S. currency. So, uh, obviously, they're going to spend that U.S. currency later. So.
So you got to be careful about even handling it?
Handling money. Yeah, that happens, happens more often than not. That's where they keep it at.
Commander Rayly, are you seeing much of the way methamphetamine at this point, or primarily just mostly fentanyl?
No, methamphetamine's still there. It's, uh, there's plenty of that to go around. Uh, I mean, the, the truth about it is, is that the border's wide open. And, and that's why, you know, when I first started, uh, being a drug agent, it's about, about ten or eleven years ago, methamphetamine was like twelve hundred dollars an ounce. You can get it for a hundred and twenty-five dollars an ounce right now. It's that easy.
I appreciate the job you and your team do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support.
Okay. We need a motion to renew our participation agreement, our intergovernmental agreement with the Lookout Mountain Drug Task Force.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion at the board? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It is approved.
Thank you, Commander Rayly.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We have a purchase order, two thousand twenty-three dash one zero two-two, in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars to purchase a PB loader. It's called a BC four patch truck. This would be funded with a two thousand twenty splash proceeds. So our, Carlin, would you like to come up and speak to this purchase
Good evening. Appreciate you having me. So, um, everybody's pretty much aware of the current patch truck that we use, washed eighty-nines, um, emulsion. It's on its last legs. It's been an issue for ever since I've worked here. Nobody likes it, the patches. Sometimes they say, stay, sometimes they don't. Um, this truck, we can, it's four-yard, so that's five and a half tons hot mix. It's got, uh, its own tack tank. It's got a tack wind. It's equipped with air, um, air hammer, air chisels, um, just about everything you need to go out to do a patch with. So these will be done with hot asphalt. It, it's going to be a two-person, a two- or three-person operation. That's where our other one is a one-person operation. But when this goes down, it's down. Um, it's not going to be a fix to our shorty shelters and tates and our chip-sealed roads. It, this can be, it, we're just not going to be able to patch those kind of roads with it. But I'll, as much paving as we've done in the last couple of years. But as much paving as we've done in the last couple of years, we're starting to see water cuts and utility cuts and stuff like that in some of our new asphalt. And there's no sense in sending our DuraPatcher out to do that. So it, that's, any questions on it? Any?
We did have this demo, or this truck demo that come out and the road department team did a nice job of learning how to use the trucks. Pretty simple to operate, pretty straightforward. And there is one available, I understand?
Yes, there is one. Should, we should be able to acquire one of these trucks in three weeks. The next build will be nine months. Went down to the APAW municipal equipment show specifically to look at this truck. And got to know a guy there. We got talking about it. It's Georgia state contract bidding, so that's, that price is pretty much set. Doesn't matter who we call, they're going to give us this price. This truck's made, I think it's built in California, is what he told us.
That's right.
It's an international truck. So the truck is...
Freight liner.
Freight, is it freight liner?
Two thousand twenty-three freight liner with a Cummins engine.
Yes, that's right, freight liner. So all the parts, everything on it's relatively simple to deal with. It's belt driven. It's not auger, it doesn't have an auger in the bed like most of these trucks. It's got a belt and chain drive. So I really like that aspect of it. Few less moving parts and if an auger goes down inside this, somebody's got to shovel it out. If the belt breaks, we can still get to the broke part and get it addressed.
Carla, you said you can hold, carry how much?
It's four yards, so that is five and a half ton, five...
And that's hot mix?
Yes.
So our availability, will that, will that, will it hurt us any on availability or are we going, or is there a way you can heat?
We can, we can put, we can put hot mix in it and it will, it's got burners on it. So to keep it hot, it's got, we can plug it in at night. Hot mix, they recommend to get it out within two days. Cold mix, there's going to be times where the asphalt plants are going to be shut down or whatever.
So it can run cold mix as well?
We can put cold mix in it and it will keep that as long until we use it. It'll keep that hot enough.
It can be used year round, preferably in the better weather. But if you had some situations in inclement weather, you could, it's retrofitted to use both options.
Right, and temperatures in the winter time, as long as there's an asphalt plant running, we can put mix in this and keep it hot and use it.
So what are your options around here for getting hot mix?
Tiptonia and one fifty-three is at Hudson, Hudson Plant, or Southeastern Materials. We go, we either go to the asphalt plant on Highway one fifty-three or the asphalt plant in Tiptonia. We've got two.
That's up at Martin Marietta.
I'm sorry?
Up off Jersey Pike, one fifty-three.
I think so.
Martin Marietta.
Is it a Vulcan plant or something?
Martin Marietta Rock Plant.
Well, there's two asphalt plants that we can go to.
Relatively close.
Right, well Chattanooga, Tiptonia and Chattanooga.
As Carla mentioned, this is a state contracted price through Sourcewell, so this is the set price. There's not any negotiation on the price. They are holding this new truck pending this meeting, pending this approval, so we could have this truck within thirty days or less. Otherwise, if we put this on hold or tabled it or anything like that, then the next potential truck would be nine months at best.
We're paying for it out of?
This will be paid out of the splash proceeds and we do have the cash to write the check to cover this investment.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to approve purchase order two thousand twenty-three dash one zero two-two to Environmental Products Group in the amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Thank you, Carla.
Thank you, Carla, for your due diligence on that. We needed that for a while.
For a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, the next purchase order we have is for landfill operation purchase order two thousand twenty-three dash one zero two-three in the amount of seventy-two thousand two hundred dollars for the purchase of a two thousand twenty-three pureless transport semi-trailer for the Walker County landfill. Also funds being paid out of the splash funds for the landfill. You have the material there in front of you. This is the pureless dual axle semi-trailer aluminum frame or aluminum skin, as they call it, exterior forty-five foot long trailer. And this would be used to haul our recycled or our grindings from our trees that we send to the plant to have those recycled. So the current trailer that we have is in growing disrepair and it's old. And Payne's done a good job looking into this and finding this two thousand twenty-three model and this trailer is available. And again, this fits within the splash budget for the landfill, the amount of seventy-two thousand two hundred dollars.
And there was another use you mentioned today, Payne, you were using for also hauling tires, is that right?
Yes, sir. We haul our tires that we receive from the landfill to a facility in Alabama.
Okay.
And this one has, the tailgate's on a little bit of like garden door style, but it also is hinged at the top. So it's good when it gets on a tippy bed and tough sides right now. If we can walk in, it's got a walking floor as well.
Very good. Do we have a motion to approve this purchase order in the amount of seventy-two thousand two hundred dollars to Blackmon Trailer Sales LLC?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question for Carla while we're in between. We're going, are you going to plan on surplusing that other truck out? Are you going to hold on to it a little while or what's your thoughts?
We probably need to hold on to it until it quits and that way we can address some of these chip sealed roads. And Lee, our guy who operates that truck, he's got a fabrication idea that I think I would try.
Okay, good deal. I just was curious what, where to place it.
Right now, we'll probably keep it for a little bit.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The next action item we have was the MAC pedigree request to rezone from C-one commercial to R-two residential for property located at the corner of East Reed Road and North Highway twenty-seven, Lefet, Georgia, three oh seven two eight, tax map impartial zero dash three two one dash two dash zero two seven. The planning commission meeting that was held last Thursday, planning commission's recommendation is to approve this without conditions. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart to approve the rezone. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved as submitted. Okay, the next item that we have was from Marilyn, is it Saunders? Thank you. Request for lot size variance for property located at one thousand three Magnolia Street, Rossville, Georgia, three oh seven four one, tax map impartial zero dash two oh six dash zero nine zero eight. The planning commission's recommendation was a denial. What's the pleasure of the board?
I would like for John to come up and explain this to us, because it was denied at the planning commission, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The gentleman there has spoken about being opposed of it originally, but I think there was some confusion on this because she was speaking of putting a mobile home and that's kind of what the discussion got involved. And it's never about a mobile home or a permanent structure. It's more about the variance on the lot size.
The variance on the lot size, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where there was some confusion. He was opposed putting a mobile home on the property, but it was more about, because in R-two, you can, as long as it's, me and Christie got together and done some research on it and whatnot, and as long as it's sixteen foot wide, you are allowed to put a modular home. The issue kind of got diverted in to the housing part, but it's really about the variance on the lot size. Now, that lot has been there for existing, I forget, I think from the seventies or whatnot, that size. So before the new ordinance were in place in the early nineties, requiring you to have fifteen thousand square feet. And I think it's ninety-six hundred if I remember correct. So that's what it kind of got off to. It got off track more about what type of home you're allowed to put on there more than the variance for the lot size that was pre-existing before the ordinance was in place. So that's what they're asking for, is a variance on the lot size, not a variance on what type of housing they can put on the property.
Right, because that's, that's the zoning issue and if it's zoned for it, then that's the way you zone out.
Yeah, that's irrelevant. Yeah, that's irrelevant. So this is more about the lot size than about the type of structure that is allowed to be on there.
So it's currently zoned R-two then, correct?
That's correct.
And it is on sewer, correct?
Yes, I think it is on sewer, correct?
Yeah, it has, it has.
Yes, that's right.
I'm familiar with the area up there.
I would like to make a motion to approve the variance.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to approve the variance. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board?
Just one more discussion. So what we're doing here is, is we're not changing the zoning, it's zoned R-two. We're just changing the size of the lot.
That's correct. Yeah, fifteen thousand square feet now is what you have to have minimum to be allowed to have it as an individual lot. Now, this law was pre-existing for years and I think they own the property beside, beside it as well that joins to it. So that's, it's ninety-six hundred square feet or ninety-eight? I think it's ninety-six hundred square feet, no, ninety-seven fifty, okay. So that's, that's what it was about, more about the lot size. And I think at the meeting, we kind of went down a rabbit hole on some housing that was required and what they're opposed to. And I understand gentlemen's concern of being opposed to that, but it is zoned to allow that. So this is more about the lot size.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
I was looking for that, I had the paper that you gave us, but Brian, that was, that's in one of those areas where all those little old lots, like you said, in that existing, hardly any of them make the minimum for today. And it's kind of hamstringing them of owning it and, you know, I think if there's a situation, this is where variances are to be used, in my opinion. This is what they're for.
He's got it highlighted where the, is existing. Well, yeah, there's various lots that even have the seventy-five feet that's required for the road frontage. As long as they meet the setbacks and have a sixteen foot wide mobile home, because in R-two, you have to have minimum of sixteen foot wide. So as long as they do that and meet all their setbacks, then you are required to have that type of structure there.
Okay, I understood. Thanks, John.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Okay, at this time, we do have on our agenda for commissioner comments, so we'll start with Commissioner Blake Moore, District One.
Just appreciate everybody coming out, getting involved and giving us your input. If I can ever help, call, text, or email, thank you.
Mr. Askew?
Again, this guy's hard to beat. No, we do appreciate the participation. It's good to see folks out here getting involved and getting your opinions out here and helping us. It helps us govern better. So just keep, keep coming and keep participating and let us know what, what you think. Thank you.
Very good, thanks, Mr. Hart.
Thanks, Kane, for coming tonight and talking about what you do. Our coroner's been here talking about that the last couple of meetings. You've heard Billy talk about that. Also Pat came last month and we approved some funding to help those guys with the fentanyl problem, so. We had Stacy Meeks, who I'm sure you know, who's a police chief in City of Lefet, came to our American Legion meeting Monday night and talked about what the everyday citizen could do to recognize fentanyl use in some of the ways that people get contaminated and don't even use it. You mentioned dollar bills, how dollar bills are folded. So Stacy was going to put that on the City of Lefet website, their police page, I think, or on their Facebook page, I mean. So take a look at it. It's a real problem and it's, you know, we lost a relatively close friend to it a few months ago, so, yeah. That's going to be great to pick that up and put it on our website as well, maybe. Probably wouldn't be. I'll reach out to Stacy and... See if it's all right with them, joking. I'm sure, I'm sure, Wilson and they're working together on it. I, yeah, that's good. That'd be, get it out to a few more people for sure.
Very good. Commissioner Stoltz?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Appreciate all the hard work our county employees do. Carla, you and Bobby, thank you. Y'all helped me out a lot this week. I really appreciate that. And to kind of add to what Commissioner Hart said, the fentanyl use is absolutely a public health crisis and it is a killer. And I would encourage all of our citizens, if you see something suspicious, if you feel like you're witnessing drug activity, you know, report it to local law enforcement and they will certainly investigate it and get to the bottom of it. So it's such a problematic thing and it's just devastating lives and killing people, so. But again, thanks everyone for coming and thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, Carla, did you have?
Is there any, anywhere to get, how much, if someone were to throw a bunch of this out in the ditch or something, does that get, how much water does it take to dilute it? Does it dilute it? Is there anywhere, there's medication on the stuff for us to give to our guys because they are in the ditch and some of these places where this stuff could be thrown out of a car? Or, you know, like if you guys are, if they're being pulled over or something and they throw whatever out of the ditch and we're out there cleaning it out? I, yeah, I just...
I reckon that's the way the Drug Task Force would go. Even if you don't know if it's drugs or not, we don't mind coming out. We collect the medicals outside.
So just be mindful of what's there.
Yeah, gloves, all these masks. But we also do training for schools, churches, businesses. If anybody ever wants to call the Drug Task Force, we have actual drugs to show people, not fentanyl, but other drugs. We also have a slideshow, trying to educate people on the dangers of fentanyl and other drugs.
Just to add, Carla, you just made a very, very good point. In that last meeting, I brought it up with our coroner. But I don't know that we might not need to look at some sort of having accessibility to Narcan for these guys because, like you said, that's the, I mean, you either do it or you don't. And if a guy accidentally gets touched off on something, there's not time for the ambulance or the police to get there. You've got, you're going to have to shoot him, you know, hit him with it. And I'm just wondering if we may want to look at purchasing or, you know, stocking up or, and maybe even training. And Kane, you could probably, y'all could probably help or get us some, if we had some folks that they wanted to maybe get trained on how to properly administer. Do y'all do that or could we get them some help?
Yeah, it's pretty easy. Most of it's nasal spray, so it's got two shots in the nasal spray and that should help you to the ambulance sometimes. It might have more, but it's sixty dollars a box, which has two nasal sprays.
So I mean, nothing, nothing to outfit our trucks with a box?
Some municipalities that take cash and they're keeping it in-house as well. Because of the money exchange right now, there's been some issues. So there's some jurisdictions and different local businesses that are, if they take cash, you know, they keep some in-house too. Like you were saying, there's a huge exchange.
Oh, yeah, like if you're, yeah, they come in to buy a building permit and they pay cash and it's got, yeah. So, so, yeah, we really need to look at that, you know, the, maybe, maybe spending a little money and trying to get set up ahead of the game. Because like you said, there's not any time, it doesn't appear that there's any time. So that's something we probably really want to look at pretty hard.
What are some of the signs that some of my guys picked something up onside?
And what are some of the symptoms that they're going to start causing before I know one of them might be dead?
So fentanyl's a whole, it's different from meth and cocaine. Meth and cocaine has a stimulus, feeds you up. Fentanyl's going to slow you down. So if somebody on fentanyl appears to be under the influence of alcohol, they appear to be drunk and slipping, and you can't smell it on them. So Narcan's not going to hurt anybody. I can give it to anybody, including myself right now, waiting, it would not hurt you. So if somebody falls out and you Narcan, it's not going to hurt them if they don't come to. That's not what it is. If they come to, you'll know this is violent. They come back, they're pretty violent, but, I was also going to say, is, is Debbie died, died later at his house, they just touched it on his clothes. So I have Narcan at my house in case I fall out. But I'm lucky because my son's a deputy for St. Louis County, they all know what to do. You know, I'll take my clothes off for the day if I've been around fentanyl.
So how long does it start before it takes effect on you? Once you do, get in contact with it?
Immediately. Immediately, yeah. You don't definitely notice a change to somebody, and a lot of times, some of the deputies, they, they got exposed to it most time, it's just anxiety, like you got exposed to it, but you don't know what else people do fall out. What it does is restrict your lungs pretty much, and you have a long time breathing in the respiratory system, so then it shuts off.
How would you see us handling that, Chairman, as far as the funding or would we want to let, maybe work through our fire department, police, or the sheriff's department to purchase? Or would you look, how, how do you think, because we, I think this is something that we don't need to put on the back burner, obviously.
I'll follow up with Chief Hodge. He was looking into this, working with Pat and also I'll follow up.
Good to, thank you.
Also, I just wanted to share, there was a phenomenal concert last Saturday, or two Saturdays ago.
Two Saturdays.
Two Saturdays ago, with a young gentleman from Lafette named Ethan Slaughter from Lafette High School who is on American Idol. So need everybody to watch American Idol, and if he could, is able to continue, please vote for him. It was amazing to watch him live in concert, the, his, the ability to sing, but also play multiple musical instruments. And I was just shocked the amount of music that he knew. I mean, he just jumped from one song to the next, to the next, to the next, and went on for probably an hour and a half. It was just, to be 17 years old and the depth of music knowledge, and he was up there playing with no sheet music of any kind, it was pretty phenomenal to, to watch him perform. So Ethan Slaughter on American Idol.
Does he have any kind of, has he done anything like a little, any CD or anything? Or I say CDs, but you know, a lot of times they'll put something out as they're getting started.
Yeah, he has, and he's on, I'm going to-
iTunes.
iTunes, Spotify.
Oh, Spotify?
Yeah, I don't know how to-
He's on some of those platforms already.
Okay.
He's cut some, some songs.
Okay, good. I liked it, I didn't get to see the show.
Ethan Slaughter, yeah. Very good. Is there any reason to have an executive session?
Yes, if someone would make a motion for personnel and for litigation.
Okay, I'll make the motion that we go into executive session to discuss personnel and also litigation.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion at the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All righty, we will stand adjourned until after our executive session, and we'll be back to close out the meeting. Okay, it's February 23rd, 2023. It is 9:32 PM.